All right, camera and microphone are live.
Okay, I'd like to go ahead and call the March 6th work session of Keystone Central School District to order. Please stand for the flag salute and a moment of silence.
A pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Rule call please.
Dr. Baldino?
Here.
Mr. Cannon?
Here.
Miss Donahue?
She's not on. She said she couldn't log back on so she has something going on.
Okay. Mr. Elling? Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Knopf?
Here.
Ms. Lynch?
Here.
Mr. Scav?
Here.
Just Smith?
Here.
Eight members present.
Okay, before we move on, I'd like to announce that we had an executive session this evening dealing with some legal issues from 5:30 to 7:02. Okay, moving right along. We have a presentation on the Bucktail Middle School High School and Renova Elementary. We should have, let's see, Dan, that should be what Eva, Lola, and McKenna and Dan? Oh, I didn't, okay, you've got more people than I thought.
Yeah, sorry, I read some last minute entries. Good evening, everyone. I'm Jim Pluto. I am the principal at Bucktail High School and Renova Elementary. We have some students and staff with us here tonight. We are going to present a short video looking at some initiatives we started this year as well as some things we continued from last year. So maybe let everyone go ahead and introduce themselves and then we'll get that started.
Mike Forman, Dean of Students, Bucktail Campus.
I'm Lola English and I'm in 11th grade.
McKenna Stone, 11th grade.
Emily Anna Demart, I'm 11th grade.
Eva Salkman, 11th grade.
I'm Mindy Stimson and I teach first grade at Renova Elementary.
Emily Miller, kindergarten at Renova Elementary.
Josh Day, science teacher, middle school, high school.
All right, the video we're about to show you guys really focuses on some new initiatives we had this year, like I said. We're looking at the High Nerdathon Project that Mr. Day's class is working on with the Student Government Group as well. Our peer mentoring initiative between the high school and the elementary school, which I believe everyone here is involved in that. And then also there was some showcasing of the Junior High Wrestling Program which got back on its feet this year. So having said that, I guess we're ready to go.
Every journey always has a beginning. In the beautiful mountains of Northern Clinton County, there are two schools, a campus, that stand as a beacon of learning and growth. At this campus, education is at the heart of everything we do and where young people are supported as they work toward their goals. This is where it all begins. For our young learners, this is a time of discovery. It's here that they first experience the joy of learning. Renova Elementary provides a spark that will grow and burn bright throughout each student's academic career. Students at Renova Elementary embark on a long transformative journey where each small step helps build the foundation for years to come. As students move through their elementary years, they begin to develop skills, knowledge, and friendships. They dive deeper into all content areas, discovering new ways to think and problem solve. In these early years, students learn the value of curiosity, hard work, and perseverance. They experience the joy of accomplishment when they master a new skill and they learn the power of teamwork when they collaborate on projects and activities. The friendships they form here will carry with them through the years ahead, helping them to build a sense of community and belonging. After moving on from Renova Elementary, students continue their journey at Bucktail High School. Here, teachers and staff continue to nurture each student's growth, offering more specialized courses and extracurricular opportunities. Students start to explore their individual goals, whether that's through academics, athletics, music, or the arts. They learn more about the subjects that interest them. In addition to academics, students at Bucktail are given the opportunity to pursue their interests in athletics and music, two areas where students can grow and thrive in their own unique ways. Whether in sports or music, Bucktail students demonstrate that success comes from more than just talent. It comes from effort, perseverance, and the belief that they can rise to any challenge. The challenges they face, whether in competition or a performance, are stepping stones to personal growth and achievement. And every step of the way, the Bucktail community is there, cheering them on, supporting them, and helping them become the best versions of themselves. Through dedication, hard work, and a relentless spirit, many of our student athletes and student musicians go on to achieve greatness, competing for league titles and state championships. At Renova Elementary and Bucktail High School, the teachers, staff, and coaches are always looking for new ways to help students grow. First, the ecology class at Bucktail High School has embarked in a journey to change the state fossil.
Our ecology and student government class is trying to change our state fossil.
Because we want to make Pennsylvania unique on America's 250th birthday. Our class's goal is to change our state fossil from the trail bike to the High Nerdathon.
That's only found in high nerf field.
The project will not only help us celebrate the 250th birthday of America.
But will also help us celebrate the heritage of Clinton County.
where our high school students support our youngest learners at Renova Elementary.
We recently adopted a mentoring program into our PBIS Advanced Tier Supports. The program focuses on fostering personal growth through regular meetings, feedback, and goal setting. Our mentors provide important perspectives on overcoming both personal and school challenges. The idea is that our mentees will gain confidence, improve behaviors, and maintain a positive relationship with their mentors for years to come. We know that this program will have a lasting positive impact on both mentors and the mentees.
This school year saw the addition of the Junior High Wrestling Program. Fourteen young student athletes signed up to participate in this sport that many had never done before. The challenges they faced were great, but all these athletes practiced and demonstrated that through hard work and perseverance, they could achieve great things. The success of this program has brought excitement to the students at Bucktail as well as the Renova community. Everyone looking forward to next season. The journey from kindergarten to high school graduation is one filled with countless memories, accomplishments, challenges, and triumphs. And every step of the way, the Renova Elementary staff and Bucktail staff have been there to support and encourage and empower our students. Whether it's through athletics, music, academics, or any other area, we are committed to helping students discover their passions, unlock their potential, and achieve their goals. Together, we will work toward building a future full of possibilities, one step at a time. The journey is just beginning, and we are honored to be part of it.
All right, thank you guys for allowing us to present that to you. I'm immensely proud of our team up at Renovo and Bucktail. Do you guys have any questions or anything for us?
Any questions?
Um, the mentoring program, I remember when this was first talked about. So whoever initiated it at your school?
So we've been, I don't, I can, I'm sorry.
So I know it's like the start of the school year. I went to PBIS Assembly over in State College last year. Actually, Mr. Umpenheimer at the time asked me to go. And one of the things that was brought up over there, there was another school, I think it was Warrior Run at the time, talking about a student mentor program. And I know that to start this school year, Ms. Coral, Mr. Heiser, and myself, we just started talking about it. And it's just kind of taken this this long, you know, figuring out how to match the kids up, you know, what kids we wanted to target, stuff like that. So finally got started and it seems to be really taking off.
That's wonderful. That's great.
Anything else? Hey, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. It was very good.
Thanks all of you. Good thing I had softball practice early. Okay, moving right along, we have the 25-26 budget update. Tony, it'll be tough to follow.
Okay, so this is the March preliminary budget for 25-26. The next page is just our timeline. That hasn't changed. June 12th, we're still targeted to adopt the final budget. The next page is newer. This was presented at the Finance Committee meeting that Christie Brooks had presented. What the, I want to show you here is the state subsidy for 24-25 and 25-26. We have an overall very small increase in our state subsidies. As you can see, the total is 108,000. That's really very small compared to what, 108, sorry, 801,000, there you go, $455,000 compared to what it was last year. Notable expenses, this is as of February, we did already discuss these, you know, to last board meeting as well. Liberty Curtain Bond Obligation is $400,000. This is the last year you'll see that kind of increase. After 26-27, you'll see that level off. So we'll still have the bond obligation, but no more increases of the $400,000.
Cool. Yeah. He was a page behind.
Oh, sorry. As discussed before too, we have the health insurance increase. That doesn't look like that's appeared to come down again for 25-26. It looks like we are, we are somewhere around the 15%. Currently, we are at 11% for this year. That's why they don't see any kind of indication of that coming down. Also Charter Cyber, we did see an increase in enrollment and the rates, and I do think it'll be a little bit more than 1.5. We're going to talk a little bit about that. I watched a webinar today that PAR's presented and I have some information regarding some of the Charter Cyber expenses and revenues. The next is Adult Education Placement. We have seen an increase in alternate education placement for Keystone Central High School and students, and also the transportation that goes along with that. Transporting special ed and alt ed kids that also would also require aids, so that increase there in those expenses. The next page shows the anticipated reduction of expenses. This is what we've been working on for 25-26. We see an anticipated reduction of staff of about 430,000. Curriculum, 98. Elementary schools combined saved about 6,500. Special ed, 270. And technology, 522,000. So overall, total as of today, we've termed about 1.3 off of the budget. We're still working, you know, through, the departments are pretty, pretty well worked through, but we're still working on other areas. So that takes us to the next page, which you are all familiar with the graphs. This is the no tax increase. What I will say that I added there, as you can see, the median assessed value is 98,400. On the next page, if there was a 1.78% millage increase, you would, we would see an increase of about $490,000. There you see the median assessed value at 98,400, which would be an average increase for a taxpayer of about $25. And as you'll see the pattern, every increase is about $500,000. So on the next page, the 3.55% millage increase will yield about 980,000. Your median assessed value, you'll see an average increase of $50. On your next page, the 5.34 millage increase will yield about 1.5 million, and your median assessed value will average an increase of about $75. Your next page, again, we're, we're still working through the budget and calculations under considerations. We have pretty much went through all the department heads. We're still looking at attrition, repurposing of staff through position control. Talked about the healthcare rates and the bond. We're going to spend a little bit of time after this talking about cyber charter. In the finance meetings and the facility meetings, we are talking about capital projects and how we may use some of our fund balance to commit to some of the projects, the capital fund projects that are, that are hanging out there that are becoming critical. In April, May, and June, we will discuss further how and if we're going to use fund balance dollars. And then the loss of revenue, we knew that this, this was our last year for ESR funding. Maintain state funding, again, we're looking at a possibility of $800,000. That, you know, $801,000 is, is all the funding that we are looking to receive this year. Each year, we're seeing a decrease in title funding. We're looking at a possible potential tax increase, and we've noticed investment opportunities, the interest rates are dropping, not, not critically, but enough to make, it could make a hundred or $200,000 difference for next year. So what I'd like to do, like I said, I watched a webinar today at PAR's, which is the Pennsylvania Association of Rural and Small Schools. They put on a webinar today regarding cyber and char, cyber charter spending. And I was really, it's, it's really good information that I think the, the public should know, the taxpayers should know exactly how cyber charter are spending their, our, your, my tax dollars. So we're going to go ahead and go to the next presentation, Colton.
Go ahead, Elizabeth. Joni, I think Elizabeth had a question. Yeah, thank you, Joni. Now, I, we have a cyber charter school that runs out of our district.
It's not a cyber charter, it's a virtual academy.
Okay, so that's, I just want to make sure that that's, that's a separate.
It's totally separate, yes. We call that a virtual academy. These are the one, the, where these are not, these are Keystone Central School District kids not attending Keystone Central Schools, either brick or mortar or a virtual.
Thank you, I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Okay. So this was a presentation, again, like I said, today, where, yes. We, as I discussed, the basic ed funding increase for all 500 schools in the school district is 75 million. That sounds like a lot of money, but that's 0.9% of the budget. For us, that's $800,000. That's not a whole lot of money, and that doesn't even touch or keep pace with inflation. So we are hoping the governor's proposals looking at other ways to help out school districts. Basically, that might not be through revenue, but through cuts of spending. And again, you see special ed, again, a 2.7% increase is, doesn't really even touch the pace of, of the expenses. Next slide. So what is being proposed is to, the governor's proposals to discontinue the cyber charter transition line where last year, they did donate, are we on the same slide?
Yes.
Yes, okay, just to make sure. There was a hundred million dollars donated towards cyber, cyber charter reimbursement. Of that hundred million, we received 268,000. That is all our school district received. We spent 4.4 million in cyber charter expenses, we received 268,000 reimbursement. So what's being recommended by the governor right now is to put a statewide cyber charter tuition rate of $8,000 for regular ed students. That would save the school district 278 million dollars if that, they would actually put that cap. Okay, next slide.
Joni, excuse me.
Okay.
We'll wait to the end for questions.
Okay. Auditor General Tim DeFor actually performed an audit on cyber charter schools. And this was through the period of July 1st, 2020 to June 30, 2023, and he looked at three things for cyber charter schools: revenues, expenses, and fund balances. So on this slide, you'll see, and we can even just focus on, focus on the fund balances. Even in 2020, the fund balances for five cyber charter schools were 254 million dollars. In 2023, it was 618 million dollars was their fund balance. There is, they, they have no restrictions on what their fund balances can be. They're not held to the same standards as school districts. You can see their enrollment went from 27,000 to 44. The next slide, the auditor obviously found some findings. And this, and the next school is Commonwealth Charter Academy. They are our largest cyber school that our, that our Keystone kids attend. And just as you can see, what they are expending their money on. Employee bonuses of 22 million, fuel stipends of two, fleet, vehicle fleet of, of a million dollars. So 25 million dollars of expense, of these type of expenses from the Commonwealth Charter Academy. Next slide. The next audit finding was from PA Cyber. Again, our students do attend, Keystone students do attend this school. 1.4 million in bonuses, 110 million dollar increase in their fund balance. That's 103% increase from one year to the next. The next slide, this was Reach Cyber Charter. Again, our students do attend there. Just even at the side, on the side there, employee bonuses of 7 million. Gift cards, gift cards to students and their families for rent, utilities, course lessons, I mean, of, of 4.2 million. Okay, the next slide. And again, just not even so much for, also for bonuses and also were spent for 404,000 just in entertainment. Hershey Park, you know, sky zoned, inappropriate expenditures, not where school districts or, or any learning facility, we should be spending their, their dollars. These were not towards student education. Next slide. Also found were, in the check registers, were payments for vehicles. This was the Commonwealth Charter. 51 payments to various dealerships, cars being purchased, not for students, not for, not for student education. So this is where all the taxpayers can help. This is where the school board can help. This is where teachers and instructors and administrators can help. There's a lot of cyber charter lobbyists in Harrisburg. How do we, how do we combat that? Well, this is where we get the information out. This is good information to know, this is good information to, to disseminate. You need to know how your charter cyber schools are spending their money. You need to talk to your legislators, you need to talk to your senator, and, and, you know, we, we need to put that cap on it or, or have some kind of requirements put on cyber charter schools for their spending. Next slide. So the talking point here, I just wanted to actually just read the Auditor General Tim DeFor has made it clear that cyber charters are being paid more than they need to to educate students and are spending tax dollars in ways that would be unacceptable for a school district. They are not held to the same standards as school districts. Next slide, this was the last slide. So again, these are great talking points. Cyber charter academic performance is abysmal. Cybers allow students to avoid accountability for truancy. There, they are no boards. There's no one helping guide them, making decisions. There's no limit, obviously, on the fund balances. And the other notice in terms of accountability were again, that the cars, the bonuses, the stipends, the fuel, it, all of those add up. This, this really is an eye opener, and it really, you know, should let you know this is how charter cybers are spending their money. Not so much, I'm sure they're student expenses, but a large portion of them are not. And this is where our money is going. 4.4 million dollars last year went to cyber charters for these kind of expenses. So we need to let the, you know, the taxpayers need to know. I don't, I don't know if they would want their tax dollars to be spent to educate students that way. So the next, one more slide, or not more slide, one more presentation, Colton to bring up. And this is where they did a Pennsylvania cyber charter school assessment and compared it to the Pennsylvania state average. And we can just pick on, or pick out one school, Commonwealth Charter Academy. You see, it's about the middle of the page. The state average, we'll just do the English, math, and science. So the state average for Commonwealth Charter was 11%. Look at the math, it's 4%. The science was 13.2%. And again, this is where these, the cyber charters are standing. I don't believe there's, there might be one school at the bottom reach that is above average in any of those categories or real close, I guess. I guess it was Pennsylvania Virtual. Nope, no, it does not either. Yes, Pennwood, yes. So not only is the spending not appropriate, they're also not appropriately educating our students.
Okay. Elizabeth.
Oh, is she done?
Yes.
I'm done. Oh, thank you. Thank you for putting on Board Doc, so it's there, people can look at it. I have way too many questions, I'm not going to ask tonight. I want to focus on one of the key things. Thank you for the enrollment. Thank you for the enrollment sheet. It shows how many students go to cyber charter on our enrollment, it's always on board docs. One thing that I don't understand is granted, they have, like you were saying, they don't have as strict guidelines. All these other things that brick and mortar, public school systems have to do, so, okay, they're not apples to apples. Okay? What I don't understand is how, how has the legislation, state government, set it up? So when public schools have to do X, Y, and Z testing, and they have to document everything every year. And it goes on the Pennsylvania Department of Education. Do they have to do those same tests? And can we compare that to what we are accomplishing? Because it's apples to apples, do you think?
I do believe they have to take the same tests and so, and that's what these numbers up here.
That's what, I've got it up here.
And how do they compare to our, we're doing better than almost all of them across the board? And the, you can see over on the right hand side, that right hand column where it says CSI under most of those. It's, that's comprehensive school improvement. So it's recognized, the state has recognized that their academic performance or graduation rate or truancy is not what it should be. And so they're under this comprehensive school improvement. I don't know that the comprehensive school improvement has caused any change to any of these cyber charter schools because this data is fairly consistent across time.
And that was my, thank you, Dr. Redman. That was my question, when, how do you know when a child is actually, are students actually attending these schools?
You don't.
Well, that, that's what I'm saying. We're paying for it, but we're not allowed to have any accountability.
Correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. So. Thank you for putting this on board docs.
You're welcome.
Chris?
Just to make it clear so that I understand and everybody else does. This is only a cyber charter and not a regular charter, right?
It's a cyber charter.
Okay, all these cyber charters that are on here, is that a statewide average or just our kids?
The statewide average.
Statewide average, okay.
Yeah, so it's all the students that attend that school.
Right.
Our students, I don't know that, that there's any way of pulling the data from our students in particular out of any one of these.
Okay. That's what I was wondering. I'd be curious to know how, how our own kids were.
We, yeah, we don't have any way to get that information unless they're willing to share it, which would be surprising.
Right. All right, but it, and then the, the brick and mortar charter schools is something totally different. Okay, thanks.
Jeff?
Joni, thank you. You said pretty much everything I was going to say this evening.
Wonderful.
The, a lot of that information you just shared with us was in the newspaper, I believe, yesterday. A couple of things you failed to mention as far as what they, they did, or they have used their money for. Now, with cyber charter school, my understanding is a digital operation. You give a kid a computer, and that's it. But they've found a need to purchase 21 brick and mortar buildings with all of this money, which I find rather interesting and curious. Their total revenue, according to the audit report, has, over the last three years from 20, the same year as you showed, has grown from 473 million to 898 million, which is nearly a billion dollars of taxpayer money being used for gift cards, for advertising. Every time you see one of their, their advertisements and commercials on TV, that's where your tax dollars are going. Every time that, that, I mean, to me, that, that, this is criminal. It is criminal. It's, it's beyond belief that if we tried this, even a fraction of this as a school district, we would have, we would have the auditors here, we would be, we would be found criminally negligent and there would be people losing their jobs. This is absolutely, it's unacceptable at the very least. I mean, I've, I've been saying this for a long time, that the charter school law is a farce. There is nothing in it that holds any of these guys accountable. And there are people, the CEOs of these organizations making big bucks. And it's not just going to gift cards and vehicles and the stuff you mentioned. I, I am sure that it's going in some people's pockets. And it is absolutely inexcusable that this stuff goes on and the legislators turn a blind eye to it. It is, it is criminal. And I just, I wish, you know, every taxpayer in not just Keystone, every one of the 501 school districts that have to pay for these cyber schools. When we're, even if they put the $8,000 cap in, I think you said the other, at a couple of meetings ago, that would save us a million bucks. Even if they just did that. But this, this whole thing needs to be addressed, and they've tried it. According to the new head of the Education Committee, who, who's said that they need to, we need to look at this. And they've tried it three times, I guess. And every time, in fact, she said, as they went into the meeting, it just kind of gets shoved under the rug. I, I mean, I, it makes me just, just really angry that this stuff goes on and we, we are scrambling here to make a budget, and these people are wasting, wasting money. It's just, I, I mean, it's mind boggling. It just, I just, I'm so glad that you brought this up.
Anybody else have anything?
Yeah, go ahead, Bill. Jon, um, just, I want to make sure I understand some of the things that you, like, when you're talking about fund balances, you're talking about money in the bank, right? All right. Are all these institutions private entrepreneurial institutions or are they enterprises or are any of them governmental? Either of you know?
I don't think they're governmental, these are all.
These are all private, yeah.
They're private, Bill. They're enterprises, and that's why there's so many of them.
Yeah.
And making money.
Again, I'm not, I'm never big on acronyms without, and this wasn't your fault, you're putting something else that somebody else did, but what's BEF and SEF?
Oh, Basic Ed Funding and Special Ed Funding.
Right, yeah. Again, in the literature that I read for decades, you weren't allowed to use an acronym unless you defined it first in the article. Okay, yeah. Here's one that might be more you than Jennifer, but, you know, these, these abysmal graduation rates. Are there any legitimate reasons for that? You know, intellectual impairment or physical problems or anything like that, or is it just that they don't give a damn?
I don't know, I can speak to that definitively. I have lots of speculation, which I would prefer not to share because it's just.
All right.
No data. No data.
Okay. It's a legitimate question, I think.
I, I agree. It certainly seems suspicious that their graduation rates are low.
They are abysmal, yeah, yeah. And I think that what Jeff brought up, that's very interesting, that they're buying buildings if they're computer based things. You know, you need, you need a bedroom to work out of.
Why do you need a car for the computers?
Yeah, well, that's the number of cars also, you know, this is very strange.
The presentation was actually 41 pages, only picked out 10. So you have access to the, the presentation, so.
Is, is there like a link to that whole thing?
It's on the.
Is it in here someplace? Okay.
Yeah, great.
Thank you. That, that was great, Jim, thank you.
Chris, you got anything? No. Elizabeth?
Last thing. Jeff, I think everyone agrees with you everywhere.
Yep.
And we all heard exactly what you said, but this is what I'm hoping that, now the auditor won't do this, but I'm hoping some group out there in Pennsylvania does. The lobbyists are keeping our representatives. I won't say in, happy, thank you. Good choice of word. I would love to see some group track those lobbyists, the money to which representatives are going to. That, I think, is the next critical step. Expose that. Thank you so much.
The only thing I'll add at the end is they did discuss the $8,000 cap today. They said that's really very hopeful that it will stay at 8,000. We're, we are hopeful, we are not, no one is to receive any reimbursement for next year, that's not in the proposal. So that to us was a good sign that they might actually do something with the cap. But they did mention that 8,000 was probably too high. There, it probably won't be 8,000.
You mean it'll be higher or lower?
It'll be lower.
Right.
That'd be wonderful.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry.
It'll, it'll be probably something above 8,000.
I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry.
So they're starting with 8,000 as the negotiating point?
It may be 10 or 12.
Either way, it's going to help us.
Could the buildings be being bought to say, well, we have brick and mortar buildings?
So just one last point to kind of add to that, and it's a reminder for the board and anyone who's listening. Please contact your legislators and ask them very pointed questions about how your tax dollars are being used to support student learning? Or are they, or are tax dollars, local tax dollars being siphoned away to other places to be used for things that don't have anything to do with student learning?
Okay, if nothing else, we're going to move right on. Thank you, Joni.
Could I add one thing, Butch, real quick? I know some of you folks are going to be at the legislative roundtable next week. And that will be an opportunity, and I'm hoping that this topic comes up with the legislators that are, that are present, so.
Who's taking the line?
Okay, next, we're going to hear from Central Mountain High School. Claire, that's you.
Yes, it is.
Thank you for being patient.
Absolutely. It's important, I'm 18, I pay taxes too now.
Getting to be a pro at this.
Every time I come though with my computer, it's slow, I swear.
We blame it on Colton.
I don't think it is.
It's Colton's fault.
I don't think Colton thought anything in it.
Hook her up.
Teasing, just teasing. Okay.
As we start March, winter sports and activities have started to wrap up. We would like to congratulate a wrestling team on winning districts and having multiple wrestlers, both boys and girls, advance to the state tournament. Also, congratulations to our bocce ball team who placed second in their district tournament. Outside of sports, we have multiple students advancing to regional and state competitions, enquirer festivals, a cappella, band orchestra, and Skills USA. Although some things are coming to a close, many things are just starting. This includes not only spring sports, but also the Spring Musical Chicago, which will be the first weekend in April. Spring choir, band and orchestra concerts, which will be in May. And before we know it, our senior, our seniors will be preparing for graduation. Speaking of seniors, senior project presentations are less than two weeks away. On March 17th, senior quotes are due in April and many scholarships are opening up. The guidance counselors have been doing a great job with posting scholarships to school to do for students, encouraging students to apply to them, and keeping us all on track with reminders about things like Smart Futures, which we must have completed in order to graduate. In student government news, we have continued our weekly meetings with Mr. Varelli, and we were even fortunate enough to have a meeting last week between the entire student government and Dr. Redman. In our meeting with Dr. Redman, we discussed many of the topics that student government talks about on a daily basis. We have recently begun having conversations around the topic of graduation requirements and credits. We believe that our current format needs to be reevaluated. We also discussed the possibility of updating the electives currently offered to make sure students are being offered courses that are appealing and beneficial for their future. These are just some of the many topics we begin discussing in the complicated equation of preparing ourselves to become future students for life after graduation. On another note, student government and myself would like to acknowledge some recent comments from the community about the high school. We are saddened to hear and read continued comments on social media and in the community that our school is all bad and unsafe. I would personally like to acknowledge that when I started high school in 2020, myself and many of my peers were scared and worried about walking the halls and using bathrooms for fear of getting in the middle of an altercation. As I talk with you tonight, I can safely say those feelings have dissipated. We acknowledge that there have been and will likely continue to be an altercation every once in a while, which I would like to remind the community and the board, happens at our neighboring schools and schools across the nation. We hope to continue changing the atmosphere for the better. The climate in the high school has seen nothing but improvements during my time here at the high school. Students and teachers alike have mentioned how much different the environment is in the high school from just a few years ago. We would like to acknowledge that this is not only thanks to our efforts in student government, but also the support and dedication from the board and our administration. We know that we're not perfect, and that we always have ways to improve, but I think it is really important that we acknowledge how far we've come. Thank you, and we look forward to seeing all of you or, oh, my goodness, all of you at many of the events coming up in the, coming up in the future. That will be taking place at, oh, my goodness, I'm starting over on that sentence. Thank you, and we look forward to seeing all of you at one or many of the exciting events that will be taking place this spring at the high school. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job, Claire. Next, we have Central Mountain Middle Schools. Madison? Sorry for keeping you here so late, but. Mine too.
Hello. Hello, Keystone. Hello, Keystone Central School Board. My name is Madison Jorcheck. I am the sixth grade representative and secretary of student government. Tonight, I'm here to tell you about all of the updates on things that have happened, that have been happening in CMMs and what we as student government have been working on. I would first like to start with the report from our trench ball tournaments that have happened on the 26th and 27th of February. The event was a success with 16 fifth and sixth grade teams and 11 seventh and eighth grade teams competing in the tournaments. The PBIS team made $1,700 out of the fifth and sixth grade teams. A sixth grade team called the Wildcats won on Wednesday and continued to the seventh and eighth grade tournament. And out of the seventh and eighth grade tournament.
It's that clock again.
That's the clock catching up.
They could be friends.
Bedtime.
And out of the seventh and eighth grade teams, and an eighth grade team called the Mario Bros. won on Thursday. A shout out and thank you to our teachers, staff members, students, and everyone involved who made this event such a success. We as student government have an ongoing Google form where students can provide feedback and report on items they would like us to work on. In analyzing our responses, students have expressed concerns about discipline, discipline issues on buses. Our team members met with Mr. Reminiscent and Dr. Redman to, to brainstorm solutions. We currently have a survey out to all students at the middle school in order to prioritize and address the concerns of students on specific buses. From there, the student government members, Mr. Reminiscent and Dr. Redman will develop a plan that can be implemented in order to create safe environments on buses and promote positive behaviors. Additionally, the middle school is looking at the current flexible instruction day schedule and seeing if we need to make changes. A committee of, of administration, teachers, and a student government representative will meet beginning this Friday, March 7th, to begin that, that process. In order to receive input from our student body, we created a survey for students to complete on FID days and will report the data back to the committee. Upcoming at the middle school is a mini-thon, which is happening next Thursday, March 13th. This is a five hour event where students can see live performances, play games, listen to guest speakers, and dance. And students are expected to stand throughout the whole, throughout the event. This year, the CMMs mini-thon team's goal is to raise $25,000 to donate to Four Diamonds. All the money raised goes directly to the fun, to funding research to conquer childhood cancer and families who are dealing with childhood cancer. If you would like to make a donation, please contact Mrs. Anis Ganish or donate online. If you would like to make a donation, please contact Mrs. Anis Ghanish or donate online. Donate online on the C M M S Minithon twenty twenty-five donor drive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
Go home and get some sleep. Okay, moving right along. Do we have any visitors signed up? No visitors.
Okay, where are you going, if other? I just wanna say that we do have three visitors from the Clinton County Leadership Foundation. They came to spend the night with us.
It's gonna be the night. I hope you brought a sleeping bag. All right, uh, next, superintendent's report.
Okay, so, uh, the, uh, Pennsylvania State Board Association Advocacy Day is May thirteenth. So if you would like to go down to Harrisburg, uh, to talk to your, our legislators directly, uh, please let Christine know and we can get you registered, uh, or you can register yourself on the P S B A website. Uh, earlier today, we learned that Curt and his team received a grant, uh, the equipment grant that he tries for every year. Uh, he, uh, and his team received a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars to go to get more equipment for the C T C program, so good job to them. Uh, Bucktail Area Middle and High School, Central Mountain Middle School, Central Mountain High School, and Sugar Valley Rural Charter School students will participate in the county band festival next Tuesday night. So, uh, it's, it's the second year in a row, uh, that it's, uh, happening. It started up again last year after stopping for about twenty years. Uh, it's gonna be hosted up at Bucktail this time. Um, so that's the first time in, um, the music festival has been hosted there in over ten years, so, uh, we're really excited to, to go up there. That is Tuesday night, the eleventh, at, uh, six o'clock, if you're interested in attending that. Uh, this year, we're implementing C K L A, our new K to five English language arts program, and Amplify E L A, our new six to eight E L A program. In December, December and February, a program coach visited classrooms onsite, met with the teachers to answer some questions and provided feedback on how we're doing, uh, with our implementation. After the visit, the coach provided overwhelmingly positive feedback on our program implementation. The coach noted that our implementation far exceeded what she expected for one-year, uh, implementation and helped us identify goals for the next school year. Uh, big shout out to our teachers and our administrators, central staff, staff folks who have worked so hard to implement the program and make E L A, uh, engaging and interesting and, and really captivating for our students. Uh, other good news, uh, Central Mountain High School did their P B I S, that's, uh, Positive Behaviors Intervention and Support's Tier One Fidelity Check. That's where someone, uh, comes in and looks at how well we're implementing things. Uh, this last year, when they did this, uh, fidelity check, they were at sixty-nine percent uh, accuracy. This year, they just finished it. They're at ninety-four percent, so they're doing a much better job of implementing all the things with, uh, P B I S. So some of the highlights, they developed a one-stop-shop P B I S handbook that outlines the flow of discipline for teachers, uh, that whether things are happening in the classroom or, or end up in the office. Uh, they were providing teachers with P B I S lessons and refresher lessons to teach expectations and a calendar of P B I S events for teachers and staff to promote rewards and positive behavior. They've also implemented a ticket system for weekly incentives for students who are doing the right thing and representing, uh, C M H S positively. And then, uh, local businesses have helped us out, uh, to, uh, provide gift cards that are given out or, or that are won by students weekly. Walmart has done a really great job of supporting this with these larger quarterly awards, um, so a couple of big TVs, a couple of, uh, AirPods.
To the students?
Yeah, they donated to the school to support P B I S so that students can win those things for, um, uh, doing well with, uh, P B I S.
Jeez.
So, uh, we also started, uh, implementing Student of the Month Lunch, where students can bring a special guest to celebrate. Uh, positive feedback from the parents on being able to come and have this experience with their student. Lunch is provided by our Culinary Arts C T E program, and this allows them to showcase their skills to the public as well. So we're kind of getting, uh, a few different things happening at once. Uh, we've also implemented bi-weekly postcards that are mailed home from teachers to students who have gone above and beyond or have made significant improvements, and we get very positive feedback from parents in the community for doing well. Overall, these initiatives have had a positive change on climate and culture for our staff, our students at Central Mountain High School, and have resulted in fewer discipline write-ups compared to last year.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Okay, moving right along, committee reports. Carter Adhot.
Uh, we've met three times now, and I want to thank everybody for all their participation. Uh, we're at the point right now where we have a draft figured out, and we're going to present it at the next board meeting for a vote and discuss it with the charter school, but I think everybody would be happy.
That's it. Thank you. Crickler, co-crickler. Paulie's not here. Paulie's not here. Who else is on that committee? Tracy?
Bill and I are, and I was not prepared to, to do anything. Um, trying to think of what all we spoke about.
Tracy, I think the minutes reflect pretty well.
Let me look at this. Do you have them in front of you, Bill?
No, I don't, but I read them before, you know, so.
Anybody have any questions on it?
No, I read the minutes. They're good.
Okay, next. So, sorry, Tracy.
That's all right.
Uh, facilities.
Okay, facilities committee met on February twenty-fifth, and we covered several different things. Um, we had Jeff Straub here from, uh, the Crabtree Architecture Group, and he gave us a, an update on the progress of the Liberty Curtain pro- prog- project. It is seventy-two percent complete at this time and eighty percent complete in the budget. It, uh, the building shell is nearly finished with interior finishes almost complete. Major components like windows, drywall, ceilings, flooring and casework are nearing completion. Um, electrical, the only hiccup we run into so far, uh, with the way things are moving along is the, with, with our switchgear, and that's pretty common. Uh, they're very difficult to get, and the time, the, the actual time to get them has taken a long time. But they found, uh, the electrical contractors found a way to use a temporary switchgear in there until he is, um, until the, the actual one arrives hopefully sometime soon. But if not, it will be ready, still ready to go to start the school year. Um, the whole plumbing is eighty percent complete. The final finishes to start, uh, on March twenty-fifth. Demolition of the existing building will happen in mid-June, and building occupancy will be phased in, uh, through, from May through August with, uh, hopefully a full handover sometime in the July-August timeframe. And so further progress will be, uh, given, another update will be given by, uh, Jeff Straub in, uh, at the May Facilities Committee meeting. Uh, all the same, another Liberty Curtain related item, they have a new marquee. You'll see, um, the information later in the, on, on the agenda. There is a marquee that is gonna be in place out near the road, uh, with the electric. It says, so, um, digital electronic sign. It'll say Liberty Curtain Elementary. It'll be programmable. Uh, an L E D message board. Uh, you'll see there were quotes that range from nineteen to thirty-four thousand dollars, and that's just for the electronic part of the sign. And there was a low bid, um, from Signs Plus. They had a ten-year warranty. There was also another, uh, company, Stewart Signs. It's a local company, I believe, out of Renova, who has had a fairly close one to that, so they were gonna go back and, uh, look a little bit further for that. Uh, also, the masonry is being donated by the Mason Company that is doing the work on the school, and they're gonna do that uh, and donate the, the materials and the labor, uh, for that sign, which is very nice, and it's, will save us quite a, quite a bit of money. So we need to make a decision on that very soon, sometime this month, so we can get, uh, the masonry moving and everything, so. I think we'll have something to bring back to the board soon. They are, we're gonna be doing some concrete work at the middle school, including sidewalks, curbs, ramp to the auditorium, uh, some failing retaining walls. We saw some pictures of those, and they definitely are in bad shape, and the, the work definitely needs to be done. Uh, we're gonna focus on replacing the damaged areas, including the retaining walls. Uh, plans include leveling the entrance to achieve A D A compliance and address the water, water infiltration and drainage i- issues. Uh, so the committee recommends that we move forward with this project because it is something that has been needed for quite a while. Next item we talked about was, uh, hand dryers for the middle school. We're, uh, replacing the paper towel holders with, uh, energy-efficient, low amperage hand dryers and all the middle school bathrooms to prevent, I know we've had an ongoing problem. Uh, Mill Hall Borough has, has, uh, complained about paper towels being put in the sewage system, so this should take care of that. We talked, somebody, I think was brought up about will Liberty Curtain be able to do that, but it was, uh, they're still gonna be using paper towels there in the new building because it was too late to make the switch. So the committee recommends moving forward with the hand dryers, uh, project to the board. You'll see that also on the agenda tonight. Uh, bathroom partitions are being replaced, uh, at Robb. The, the old ones in there are rusted, and they've been extended life by sanding and painting over the years. Uh, a new quote for the partitions has been received, and a local contractor has been approached for comparative quote. Um, funding is available and work is planned for this summer, uh, with emphasis on early approval, so we can get it done, uh, and get equipment in there. So the committee also recommends moving forward with this project, uh, voting to approve that next week. Um, some information updates, the Bucktail Stormwater piping repair. We're awaiting quotes from two local contractors, uh, Hargreave Utilities and Thompson. Uh, the C M S H S High School Family Consumer Science Room here. Uh, there's, um, our guys in the C T C are coming up with, they're doing a, uh, design competition between two, two parts of the class. Uh, they're gonna take a field trip to Bucktail to take a look at, um, uh, their room up there. And so that will hopefully be, uh, they'll be, have a design, and then we discuss the potential sponsorship from Lowe's to help with those costs. Uh, we talked a little bit about the, uh, new middle school traffic pattern to kind of alleviate all the congestion over there. Um, and I, I think Sam had a meeting with the foreman from R C Bowman, and he's waiting some, some budgetary updates. And, um, some detail, it would take some detailed engineering, and this is something that won't happen overnight, and so the funding would likely come from, on aside funds, uh, in the, uh, reserve if we go ahead and move with, with that sometime in the future. Middle school converting, there's a couple, we need a couple new classrooms, uh, in the middle school, and we talked about converting some, uh, library space that's available to, um, uh, create those classrooms. Uh, the target completion for that, of course, is of, so we can have them ready to go for next year. And some, the Woodward Cafeteria at Woodward Elementary is a serving line modification. Uh, proposed modifications include expanding the serving doorway from thirty-six inches to six feet with a roll-up door, uh, and isolating the serving area from the gym. Uh, plans include obtaining quotes and exploring the possibility of involving maybe the Consumer Science Program, Future Designs Projects. So, as you can see, there was a lot of stuff happening. And as I said, there's about three or four of these items you'll see later on in the agenda with further details. Sorry it took so long, but there's a lot of stuff, so.
Next report, the finance committee, Bill?
Yeah, we, uh, the essence of the meeting is well described in the minutes. Um, there were several presentations. Um, Joni presented, uh, well, there was a budget presentation, which Joni's redone tonight, and, uh, you know, um, Mr. Peters gave a nice presentation about the Virtual Academy. Some topics that came up is, um, it's recommended that we, um, commit some funds, uh, and that'll come up at the, uh, voting meeting, um. There's gonna be a new position, um, we're investigating, adding a new position for a grant writer, and, uh, we went over the interest earnings. All of that stuff is in the meetings, in the minutes, I'm sorry. The, probably the most important thing that we, we're gonna address later in this meeting is there was a presentation by a group from, um, the Mill Hall Borough in regard to, um, the Mill Hall Pool, which is apparently severely in need of, uh, rehabilitation. Um, they're looking for a contribution, and, uh, we'll have to discuss that at, um, at, we'll discuss that later in the meeting, and hopefully we'll have some. Dr. Redman, hopefully, do we, do you have information from Mr. Lindsay on?
I sent it out earlier today.
Okay, I didn't see that, I'm sorry, you know, okay. What, what was the answer?
Yes, we can.
Okay, yeah, uh, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, personnel, Tracy?
We met February twenty-fourth, and one of the things we talked about that is on the agenda for this evening is, um, in order to facilitate hiring support staff and getting them hired as quickly as possible and not losing them to other jobs while we're waiting for board approval is to allow the superintendent to, um, authorize hiring them, so we can get, um, vacancies filled. And that's about it.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we have some information items, uh, the Treasury's report, financial report, enrollment report, uh, the report from the Virtual Academy. Uh, two policies. Uh, policy three fifty-two deals with the school's resource officers and school security officers. And policy nine one eight is title, Title One Parent and Family Engagement. Any questions on any of those? Okay, moving right down to board. Uh, one, we have a settlement agreement. We're voting on, we discussed earlier in executive session. Uh, the restructure of Bucktail. We've talked about that numerous times. It's just a formality to do away with the three-school system and make it back to the elementary slash junior, senior high school. Any questions on that? Uh, we have the I U ten general operating budget that we disapprove every year. Any questions on that? Uh, next, we authorize a superintendent to fill vacancies of existing support staff positions. Any questions on that? Go ahead, Elizabeth.
What does the definition of support staff?
So we're talking, uh, about, uh, custodians and cafeteria workers are the ones where we see a lot of turnover, and we have typically immediate needs to fill those. And so the higher, we've done, done our, we're working really hard to make sure that our, uh, hiring aligns with board meetings. So we go through the hiring process, get all the checks done, and it comes to the board, and the board approves, and then we bring the person on. But there are, uh, some of those support roles, again, custodians and cafeteria is the, the ones that happen most often. Where that can't happen on the cycle of the, the board meeting exactly, and it becomes operationally problematic to kind of throw too big a words at it, to, to not have those people doing those jobs. So the request from administration, we talked to the personnel committee about, is would you allow me to approve those hires to get them started? Uh, but it would, it would always be pending board approval, so we could get someone started, and if the board found some reason why it wouldn't work, then we'd have to uh, basically undo that. The board always has the, the option for that.
I understand the reasoning. Um, one thing that I'm, I'm still processing this because I know we have a high, it's normal, I guess, a high turnover rate for those two specific departments. One thing would probably help is if the exact title of what support staff is, because right now I can't support it because support staff literally could be anybody. You have your definition of what it is, but it could be technically anybody, because we all support the school list, right?
Well, there's a support staff, there's a support, support staff contract. So we're not talking about teachers, we're not talking about administrators. We see inside of the support staff, uh, argument.
Okay, well, that would help to have that in there, what support staff is. That would be very helpful, and I'll still process this. If I have other questions, I can ask later.
Chris?
Yeah, I was kind of looking for a definition on that also, could you put? Like, support staff for custodians and cafeteria?
I'll put the specific job titles that we're talking about on there.
All right.
That would be very helpful, I think they'll make good.
That would help me make a decision because I don't believe in giving anybody this carte blanche to hire whoever they want. We got procedures we have to follow, but if we knew what you're pinpointing.
Yeah, easy enough.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, next Community Pool at Mill Hall Park. Any questions on that? Any discussion on that?
I do not. I understand the need for it, but I don't see how we can fund that. They're asking us for a hundred thousand dollars when we're talking about having to raise taxes again. I just don't see how we can fund it and the discussion that we had with maybe having students put stuff together and doing fundraisers, I can go along with that. I know that, I'm being told by people that we're using the YMCA for the swim team.
We use Lock Haven University and then sometimes the.
And that, so, so to be told that this is the only thing your people can use, I disagreed with that. Because I didn't know we were using the other two. So that kind of made me look even harder at it.
Want to just go around the table, Bill?
It sounds like a useful asset, but I think that to come to us for, first of all, that kind of money is impossible. We're trying to save dollars and cents here and there and to donate a hundred thousand dollars, I think, would be irresponsible. The idea is if we can, if we can work a cooperative effort and find ways to help them with fundraising things, that, that would be a good thing. As for using the pool, I think, I don't know. And I didn't see, maybe when I looked at the thing, they don't have the dimensions in there, but it could be a difference if it's a long course pool versus a short course pool. You know, it might be something that if the swim team's involved in those things, it might be important, I don't know. Then I think, you know, I'm not sure anybody here knows the dimensions of that pool, you know, so.
I think they're, they're looking at putting in a 25 yard, the attachment does have.
Was there a dimension in there? I missed it.
All right, towards the bottom of the page.
What is, so it's 25 yards, you said? Or 25 meters and that's, that's another short course pool.
And that's what they swim in competitions, everything they're swimming is 25 yards.
Yeah, well, yeah. Sometimes they spill over outside the school year and, you know, then, then you're into the long course stuff, you know, 50 meters. So. I'm not, I mean, I, I don't see how we can do this myself, as much as I'd like to. This is, we're, we're between a rock and a hard place. I mean emotionally, I'd like, as a swimmer and a swimming coach, I would like to see, support that. But as somebody who's pushing for fiscal responsibility here, I don't know how we can do it. You know, I'm sorry, you, you know, I usually don't waffle, but I'm waffling on this one.
Thank you, Elizabeth?
It was well put.
That's the shortest I've ever heard you. No, I like you at home tonight.
I have heard a lot of the community say that, do away with the pool and make it a splash pad. It's a lot cheaper and everybody would enjoy that more. I don't know.
That's up to Mill Hall.
That's not our business.
Exactly.
I, I don't know, I, I know there's no way we can afford a hundred thousand dollars. That's just, I mean, if we had all kinds of execs revenue coming in. Maybe they should call, it's the cyber charters people.
Yeah, recommend they get a donation from them.
They seem to be able to throw money around pretty well, maybe they could, maybe they could finance the whole pool, I mean.
Get Joni to talk to them.
I, I, you know, I feel for the, the guys that were here the other day at the finance or the finance meeting to, you know, and their, their plea. But I don't, I don't know that we could, it would be irresponsible for us to do it at this point. But I think. You know. If, if there was some way we could maybe make a donation of some much, much smaller amount possibly, but I don't, I just don't think that we. It would be irresponsible to do that.
Tom?
Yes?
Your opinion on the Mill Hall Pool request for a donation?
No.
Thank you.
I know it's not a voting session, but I, I, no.
Okay, Tracy.
Sure than Elizabeth.
I know, it's hard to believe. Elizabeth for that show, Tracy?
I agree with everything that everyone has said, as much as I would love to. It, we just can't with taxpayer dollars and the position we're in right now. I think there's other ways that we can support them through fundraisers, student fundraisers, district fundraisers, you know, but we just can't.
Well put, Tracy.
Roger?
If I just say ditto, will that work?
Yeah, it's still longer.
Yeah, honestly, everything everybody's saying is, is factual, so there's no point in rehab.
I, I saved myself for last only because I, I agree with everyone, what they said, but I also want to make a couple of comments. Those, the three gentlemen that were here that day, they said something about starting a fundraiser. They were going to try to get, what, 10 people a week to donate a hundred dollars for 10 weeks. I'll personally donate the hundred dollars to help out, but I don't think the school district can afford to do it. I think the school district, like I mentioned that day, can find fundraisers to do. We heard tonight from, oh, you're a chat girl, I can't remember her first name. Anyway, she said that they're going to try to raise $25,000 at the middle school for fun. If the middle school can raise $25,000, what do you think we can do if we put the whole district to work trying to raise money? So I think we should commit the district, the district to raising, helping to raise funds. Put the responsibility back on the kids that's going to be using it, maybe they'll respect it more, use it more and appreciate it more, so.
Could be really fun thing.
Okay.
That's it for that then.
Good, good. Roger, I feel your pain.
But moving right along, we have the minutes from February Work Second Minutes, February Voting Minutes. Policy Committing Curricula, Co-Curricula, Facilities, Finance and Ad hoc Charter, any questions on any amendments? Excellent. Next up. Business, Bills for Payment, any question on the bills? Go ahead, Elizabeth.
I know, I didn't email, I'm just bringing it up again and we don't need to discuss it unless you want to discuss it. But in Section 15, the Tax Office, there's more, two more substitute people that were working in the tax office a few months ago. And I, I just wanted to bring it to your attention, I don't, I don't agree with that.
Okay. Any other questions on bills? Next up, we have a Meadows Psychiatric Center Agreement, any questions on that? Any questions on the Transportation Agreement? ESS Substitute Addendum to Extend, any questions on that?
Yeah, what, what is it that they do for the?
They find our substitutes.
Oh, okay, that's who finds the substitutes, okay.
Our substitutes are actually ESS employees?
I thought it was from that other thing that's on, in the bills for payment all the time, I thought that's what they did.
Well, yeah, that, yeah, this is the agreement that let, and we do pay.
That lets them do that, okay.
Yeah, we pay, yeah. Okay, the Liberty Curtain Marquee Sign, any questions on that?
Jeff, what are the dimensions on that sign? I just now opened it and I'm seeing.
I don't, I can't answer that, maybe, is Brett here?
Yeah.
I'm seeing it now, it, it's on the drawing.
It's on the drawing.
It's on the drawings.
Yeah, yeah. Because our fire company did one and they did it for about six grand, that's why I was wondering.
Well, this is a pretty sophisticated one, it's, it's got LED, you can program it from the building with an app, I believe. And it's.
There's different looms, I guess.
So.
Or pixels, I guess it's more pixel than.
Yeah, it's.
Right, so the six one meter is, is a special. So Chris, if, if, I'm sorry for interrupting, if, if you have a line on this kind of sign, it's much cheaper, can you just send me that information?
Yeah, I'll get it for you, just, it's, it's by a very reputable company and a lot of fire companies use them.
Yeah, just send my line, we'll take.
Our Amish, our members did the brickwork and everything, but the sign was different and they can sit in the fire company on a wireless laptop keyboard and punch it all in.
Okay, yeah, I'll take a look at that, thanks.
I'd like to make, make a statement on this.
Okay, Tom.
Don't we have in our Vo-Tech, don't we have a masonry class? Why can't we build that other than, other than the electronics, why can't we build it ourselves? We have students that are studying this.
Tom, that, the, there's, this is, the cost of this is just for the electronic part of it. The masonry people that are working on the building are donating all the materials and the labor to do all the masonry work on that. So it's not, it's not costing us anything for that portion of it, it's just the, it's just the electronic part of this, of the sign.
Okay.
I like that idea though, I, I think that's a good, maybe I can, I can go talk to Bill Probst and see if we can get some students there at least to observe at the same time that they're building it.
Think that'd be a good idea. Be a good class.
Microphone please.
Yeah, I, I did reach out to Kurt Lynch and explore that option early on in this planning process. He felt that it was kind of too large scale to get kids off campus and, and something for them to do off campus. So it just didn't work out, but that was an idea that was pitched early on.
I, I will say when we had the Construction Trade Program at Bucktail. We had the Construction Trade Class at Bucktail build the sign, or not the sign, I'm sorry, the structure, the whole design. I provided all the stone, they provided all the labor. It worked out real well, I think it's a beautiful structure, actually the stone came from the old Renova High School that was tore down, so, but yeah. Okay, Elizabeth, you had something?
Yeah, real quick, thank you, Dr. Redmond, that's one thing I had mentioned during this presentation. And not to take all the hard work you, you folks did, Brett and et cetera. But this is an elementary school in rural America and spending $20,000 for a neon flashing sign, I think is going a little too far. Not that we don't want something nice, but we have to just stay focused on where we are with the budget, all these other things we have. And I'd like, thank you, Chris, for stepping up and maybe there's going to be something a little more reasonable out there that isn't $20,000. Thank you.
The only thing I'd also like to say, Jeff, I think you said the Stuart sign was from Renovo, it's not from Renovo, it's actually the, it's the sign that's used at Renovo. They made that sign, the company's not based out of Renovo, I think they're out of Florida.
My, my bad.
Okay, anything else on the sign? All right, Central Mountain Middle School Hand Dryers. Any questions on the hand dryer? Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Thank you so much, this has been a going, ongoing problem for Mill Hall Borough Maintenance. And this is just a learning process that we learned, unfortunately. You know, when we move forward, when we replace other ones in the other schools someday, when needed, that we keep sticking with the same, try to stick with the same product. So like, like Jeff said, Liberty Curtain, they go, they still have paper. So just putting that out there, it was a learning moment.
Any other questions on the hand dryers? Robb Elementary Bathroom Portitions, any questions on that?
I got one on it.
Go ahead, Chris.
Instead of spending $40,000 on that, would it be cheaper and easier to have RCTC design one or out of metal or just do a block wall between them?
I don't know.
I think the block wall turns into a space issue, there's not enough space between the urinals and the bathrooms or the toilet sections to put in black, block walls. But the whole point of this was to get rid of the metal and go to the plastic poly.
Okay.
So it's less maintenance.
Been in there, so I didn't know, I was just curious.
It's pretty tight between elementary sized urinals and, and toilets.
Okay.
To put this.
Just curious. Any other questions on that?
What's the problem with the metal? The rust.
The metal ones are rusted pretty bad and they've been repaired numerous times, sanded, painted. And most of them have holes in them now, so the poly will eliminate that moving forward.
Yeah, oh yeah. Any other questions? Moving down to Personnel. Any questions on Personnel?
Now that's quite a list.
Yeah. Any questions on that? Next up is the Bucktail Music Theater, Dr. Redmond asked me if we could table that till next month. They're going to gather some more information about the number of students that are participating in the program. So we'd like to table that music theater, teacher position. So, so moving down to Summer Park Program Job Descriptions, any questions on those?
Is that part of that package that we okayed before?
Okay.
Yeah, these are just the job descriptions, we found that, we didn't have the descriptions for those.
Oh, okay.
So it's just kind of doing some cleanup.
Any other questions on that? Nope. Next up is the Occupational Advisory Committee, I think that's something Kurt has to put out every year from members of the community, any questions on that?
Nope, did a good job.
Okay, Curricular Co-Curricular on Athletics, any questions on the athletics part? Student Activities. Bee Creek Legion Baseball Field, that's just an agreement we do every year for using their field, it's the same one we just did last month with Mill Hall, basically. So we use that for KV Baseball, I believe. Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Thank you, I will say this, when the Dolphins came to give their presentation to the Facilities Committee meeting, oh Finance, I'm sorry. That was the Mill Hall Pool Representatives, something I think, well, I know I take this for granted. The school district and these host municipalities have had these wonderful partnerships and agreements. I mean, our teams, baseball teams basically are using these municipal fields for almost no money at all. And I've always felt that I've always taken, anyways, I'm very grateful, very grateful that we have these cooperative agreements with these baseball fields and municipalities.
Any other questions or comments? Next up is the Revision of the Schedules at Central Mountain High School in Bucktail, any questions on that?
It's good.
I think it's basically giving the kids what they've been asking for.
Yep.
So, all right, next up, the Elementary Majorette Proposal. Any questions on that, anybody? Anybody? Elizabeth?
When I was on the Curricular Co-Curricular Committee three years ago, I believe we had a presentation, anyways. I'm super excited, yes, 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 thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Hey, we're there now.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.